All right, the time is now seven o'clock. This is the Town of Plainfield Board of Selectment meeting for August 10th, 2020. I'll call this meeting to order and ask. Let's see what we got going on here. That would be helpful. Ask that we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just had a few more people joining while we do that, we can continue on. We do have item C, which is on the table for, I'm sorry, roll call, Kevin Cunningham. Art? Becky? I do not see Kathy yet. All right. We, item C, which is the approval of minutes for the regular selectmen meeting for July 27th.
The question I had was item three.
I'm sorry, aren't you breaking up, so?
Oh, item three.
Yes, do you want me to come over? Okay, bye.
You may still be having some difficulties with the inbound here, so I want to make sure I can hear you, Art. So I was asking Mary Ellen to come on over here. All right, so your question on, was it item three you said?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Much better.
Okay, um, the resolution. Hold on a second. The resolution I asked about the dates. Department of Emergency Services, Public Protection. Item three, well, the copy I have with Barbie signature on it has the wrong dates on it. I brought that out, about the dates.
What are the dates that you had?
The meeting was on top, the meeting was held on July 27th.
Got it.
Not July 26th.
Yep.
And you you took office on November 19th, 2019, not the 18th.
All right, we can modify those minutes if you want, you can put that in your motion. Modify those minutes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for July 13th meeting. I'm amending it to put the right dates for the item number three.
All right, which would be point of office for November 19th and the actual paperwork for July 26th.
It should be July 27th, our meeting date at the top.
Twenty-sixth to the twenty-seventh, okay. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, motion has been made to amend those dates, I will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, thank you. Go now to item D, which is public comment. Do we have anybody here tonight for public comment? Hearing none. Old business item E, which we do not have at this time. Item F, we'll go right into the action items for today. Item F, there's Consider an Act on Tax Refunds as Requested by the Tax Collector Totalling $437.52. I'll read through them for you. Krista Field, $84.03. John K. and Rose Bryant, $96.40. Richard Burdick, $43.63. Anisha Dalton, $91.93. Michael Caruso Jr., $33.34. Toyota Lease Trust, $40.66. And Stephen Vignoy, $47.53.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax refunds in the total of $437.52.
Motion made, I will second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, the next item up is item number two, which is in your packet is a Consider an Act on Authorizing the First Selectman to Execute into a Pilot Agreement with Constitution Solar. The background for the people who are here. Let me do this, and it's a little bit, a little bit of turn here because we have Mary Ellen Hall, she's our taxes assessor, and she and I have been working together with Constitution Solar. We've been putting together some back and forth information which helps out tremendously in regards to what their project is and what they'd like to be able to do for the Town of Plainfield. So I would say that our, what we have in place is it's pilot in lieu of taxes, so that's why they call it a pilot program. You'll see that we have been working out with the town's attorney and also the Constitution Solar attorney. The opportunity to come up with a abatement program, so that's twice pilot. And that's why you'll see all of the documentation associated with it. And for the selectmen, I actually put an extra page at the back. It gives you an idea of what the dollar value is. And that is, again, a very I would say a pro Plainfield.
Absolutely, yes.
So with that, we've been working hard with them because they've been working on a plan to put in solar fields up at the end of Cornell. And that's off of Blackfield Road. And very strong company, very open to our negotiations. So they've been working very hard to accommodate this as a opportunity for the Town of Plainfield. You may have read through some of this already, Art, I know you, by the way, this, this isn't just a for a second, this isn't just a fly-by-night company that is just coming in and doing something. If anybody knows how this whole process has been going, this has been going for a couple of years. They've been coming into the town, they wanted to put something up, and they've been trying to work with us as best as possible. So what you'll see is the fruits of many years of work, but a lot of work over the last seven, eight months, that they've been really coming to the table and saying, here, here we go, we really do want to come in. Here's what we have, and they've done a very good job of presenting themselves to the public. They've had multiple meetings in the town hall where they have answered all the questions from the public as to what's going on. They've tried to make sure that they were upfront about everything. I can't say enough good things about this particular company. I do know that they were considering a second project already. So I can say that they definitely are looking in Plainfield for more opportunities. And if they work with the Town of Plainfield like they worked on this, I think that the residents would be very pleased because they're bringing in an opportunity for tax revenue. It's not so much the jobs, that's obvious. Once the jobs are completed putting up the actual solar panels in the field, then the opportunity there is for taxes. Now, first, let's kind of explain what the tax process would be. You would either be able to go into a pilot agreement program for pilot, for payment in lieu of taxes, or you could just pay the taxes annually.
That's right.
In the first five or six years, you'd get a larger return for your dollar. And it kind of drops off drastically at that point.
Yeah, it does.
So I mean, I've spoken enough on that, I don't know if you have any questions, Art? Mary Ellen's right here, we can answer her question, or answer your questions with Mary Ellen.
I had a question on the front page. Whereas down, Constitution maintains projected level of future real and personal property tax obligations. They say it wouldn't be economically feasible. Is the tax rate on that land higher than what we will get for 20 years?
No, we're going to be getting a great deal more than what we would receive if that land was to stay vacant.
So why they says economically unfeasible?
Well, that's by the negotiation to talk about what would be an appropriate figure to be able to make it profitable for them. They'll be paying their taxes on what would be, they would be installing over there.
Okay, that is just the way it's worded. And the second page says, I guess this is are they starting on June 1st, 22? Is that what they're projected towards?
That would be the first tax date.
Yeah.
The first grand list would be October 1st, 2021. So a little more than a year away.
I'm just going through if I made any notes. Okay, so until then, next page, section two, payments prior to abatement period. So you'll be getting the normal taxes on that property until October 2021?
Yeah, yeah.
On the next page, page four, item F, is this saying that they could increase their output at some point?
It does, I believe it does, I mean, I haven't read through it, but it does talk about if they do increase capacity that we would then revisit how much they pay in, in taxes per year. So we're not at one set amount, it's
Per megawatt.
It's per megawatt, so.
So if they add, the addition would be renegotiated at that point?
We would, yeah, we talked about the further conversation on this contract, correct?
Right, that as an additional contract.
They also have to provide us with information yearly. I, I don't have it marked in the, in the contract, but they have to let us know how much they're going to be generating. And we will use that amount and multiply it by the figure that we have to come up with the tax amount that they need to pay.
Yep, I think if you take a look at the numbers right there.
I don't know, were we allowed to say that? Okay.
Well, I mean, you, you get on the top of the page, Art, you'll see the actual number, we don't
Right, I see that.
Yep, so we'll, we'll continue to talk about that per megawatt, if they're going to go higher and a larger space area. But I, I can say that they have already spoken about how they'd like to be able to utilize another piece of property right near there to do another project. Yep.
Okay. Oh, that was it.
Okay. And this is a, a different time to bring this part of the discussion up, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it anyway. We do have our chairperson for our Board of Finance here, Tom Sinkowitz. I would actually invite Tom in for the discussion, just if he has any questions concerning this. It will be something that the Board of Finance is able to utilize in the next 20 years if we go forward with the contract. Is there anything in particular that, Tom, that you have a question or a concern on?
No question, I'll just make a comment, I'm certainly for exploring this more. I'm glad that we've been making progress on it in recent months because I'm for exploring certainly fields more, especially with the recent setbacks and delays when it comes to the school solar panels. I, I think it's important, I mean, we need to take advantage of every opportunity we can, especially the fact that we're going to come up short on the savings for the school buildings this coming time around, so I'm happy that we're looking into it. And what I would like to do is put it on a future Board of Finance meeting just for giving the board members any opportunity for their questions or concerns on it. And certainly we'll be talking about it more, you know, as we get closer to the budget season.
Thank you. So yeah, this is something that now, Mary Ellen has worked hard on and the town has worked hard on. And I think that we have a decent number that would work and help and support you know, our budgets in the future. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a good thing, I think. So I don't have a problem with future negotiations with this company because I think they were very upfront about what they were doing and also very, very helpful. Giving us all the information we asked for, right off the bat. So I guess at this point, Art, if you have anything else. I guess we would entertain a motion to on item number two, authorizing the first selectman to execute a pilot agreement with Constitution Solar.
I'll make that motion.
I will second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number three is, we do finally have Chris, Chris is back in now, excellent. We have a discussion on virtual net metering and a pilot agreement with East Coast Energy. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you for everyone's time.
Yes, so we have multiple things that we're talking to Chris about, but I wanted the Board of Selectmen and the town to understand, you know, what virtual net metering is and opportunities the town may have at this time to, again, either negotiate something or at least understand what VNM is and what the pluses are for any town that might, might utilize it. So do you need me to give you the access for, make you the host so you can go through your PowerPoint? Or do you want me?
Yeah, yeah, I think you have to enable something because
You're there.
It says I can't share.
You should be able to now, I just muted the
Oh, we can. Just want to make sure I
If not, you sent me the PowerPoint so I can, I can run it if you can.
Yeah, just bear with me one second, and I'm gonna see if this works. I apologize, it's asking me to give, give the system permission here, so I'm trying to do that. Yeah, you know what, I think, let me try one more thing here. Because it's asking me to shut down Zoom, so I don't want to do that.
Nope.
Let's try this. Can everyone see my screen now? Okay, great. I want to put it on my main monitor so it doesn't look like I'm staring off into space here. All right, I'll, I'll try to run through this fairly quickly. I, I think it would take about 15 minutes or so, is that enough, is that too much time?
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, I, I'm just gonna walk everyone through, well, I'll give you a little background on our, on our company, some of the projects that we've already built in the town. And, and then walk you through the mechanics and framework of what the virtual net metering program is and how it works. I'll try to enter slideshow mode here.
There you go.
Okay. All right. Just a brief introduction to Alco Renewable Energy and Ecos Energy. Ecos Energy is the development arm for Alco Renewable Energy, which is our parent company. And Alco is, is generally the, the entity that, that owns and enters into contracts for our projects. But our companies are focused on development of distributed generation solar PV projects throughout the US. And the distinction between distributed and, is that these are generally smaller utility scale solar projects that interconnect directly into the, to the low and medium voltage grid as opposed to, you know, 20 to 50 megawatt projects that interconnect to the transmission grid. And generally, all of these virtual net metering projects that we're going to talk about are distributed generation. So they're sited near distribution circuits, they don't have to be necessarily near substations or big transmission lines. To date, we've, we have 34 operating solar farms around the US. They range in, from 500 kilowatts to four and a half megawatts. For frame of reference, generally, the virtual net metering program projects are in that one to two megawatt range, and that those occupy, you know, about four to five acres in general. We have a host of utility customers that I've listed here. And we have developed and operate right now 15 projects under the virtual net metering program. And those projects currently sell net metering credits to a number of different towns, including Newtown. We have several facilities with them. Town of Plainville, I think, has three, Westport has four, or I think five, actually up to five now. The Town of Weston and Westbrook, and then now South Norwalk Electric and Power. And I'm certainly happy if the, the town decides they want to pursue this. I could provide references to some of these other towns that we have an operating history with to talk about the program more. For those unfamiliar with the, the two projects we have constructed in the Town of Plainfield, these are located just to the south of Plainfield Pike or Route 14A to the east of Interstate 395. We have operating two one-megawatt facilities. The, the one on the, we're actually looking off to the west here. The one to the south, or the bottom of the picture is the first phase. And then we've actually just commissioned a second phase, which both are one-megawatt operating under the virtual net metering program. And we have a third phase that's currently being proposed, that would be a little bit off this picture to the right. That is another one-megawatt phase that does not have any virtual net metering contract with another town at this time. So we have a future phase already in the works. We actually have additional land to the south here that could accommodate additional phases, should the Town of Plainfield be interested in one or more megawatts on this property. And we actually have the ability, this is actually a pretty appealing circuit. We have the ability to interconnect and deliver energy for a number of projects in this location. So the whole concept behind the virtual net metering program is to allow municipal, state, and agricultural customers to save money on their energy bills. And this is done through purchasing what they call net metering credits, or basically buying energy from renewable energy facilities. And I'll get into how the mechanics work, but essentially to qualify, these generating facilities have to be Class 1 or Class 3. So they can be wind, geothermal, they can be all, all sorts of different types. But solar tends to be the most popular type of technology to participate in the virtual net metering program. There's also a restriction on the facility size, it can't be larger than three megawatts. That's, you know, the, going back to the previous slide, those two projects that we have constructed, they're actually considered separate facilities. So they're actually two one-megawatt facilities. And generally, we don't go up to this three-megawatt size limit. And then under the program, for each facility that you have, the, the town can assign up to five of their accounts, whether they be schools, the town hall, police stations, street lighting, things like that. And each facility can have five of these accounts tied to it. They call these beneficial accounts. There has been talk, and I'll get into the expansion of the program, of actually increasing that to allow, you know, some towns have a lot of these very small accounts that they want to aggregate. And they can't do it because they'd have to put, you know, 10 accounts on a one-megawatt project, and that makes it challenging. So what most towns have tended to do is use, you know, the schools, which are the largest users of energy, and use those as the beneficial accounts.
Chris, a real quick question while you're there.
Yeah.
You're saying the schools are usually the higher one, what about, do you have any tied into your water pollution control sites at all? That's, it gobbles up a lot of energy.
Yeah, we do in Massachusetts. In, the only town that has one of those accounts, well, it's actually not a town, is South Norwalk Electric and Water. So, but the other towns haven't used any of those, but I know those are huge energy users.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. I, I won't get into this last bullet point because it's kind of out of order here. So just as far as the status of the VNM program, it's been very popular, as, especially as more towns have become aware of this, have you know, taken a while to get familiar with the program. But it's currently exhausted in its, in its current form. There was a, well, there is a bipartisan committee, the Energy and Technology Committee, that had a bill, or at least the framework of a bill, ready to propose during the last session. And of course, the pandemic hit and everything got put on hold. So the status of the VNM program is kind of up in the air. We've heard anything from rumors of doubling the program to lifting the cap completely, to possibly also just delaying any decision until 2021. We're hopeful that we're, the state will do something later in the legislative session this summer. But we don't know what is actually going to happen at this time. But that said, if the town is interested in this program, I would strongly encourage the town to submit one or more applications just to get into what they call the VNM queue. It's basically a waiting list. In the past, legislate, legislation has just simply cleared the queue to expand the program, and so there's a possibility they could do something like this this coming summer. There are a number of towns in the queue right now. I was told, I think, the last update I got from EverSource is about 20 megawatts in the queue. Then, there's no risk to the town should they want to submit one. There's no application fee, the town can withdraw it at any time. So it would behoove the town if they're interested just to get in line, whether it be with us or, you know, another solar developer. Certainly, we hope it's with us, that's why I'm giving this presentation, but there's, it's absolutely no risk. So I just want to stress that over and over. Let's see. This next slide is just intended to help everyone understand the kind of mechanics and how the program works with respect to flowing of money and energy through the various entities. And I set this up sort of start with, this is the solar farm up here, the project entity that would be set up to own the solar facility, and it sort of works counterclockwise here. So the solar farm generates, obviously, the energy that's tied into EverSource's grid. That energy does flow into the grid directly to EverSource. EverSource then, based on the kilowatt hours generated by the solar farm, issues monetary credits to the Town of Plainfield in this case, under what's called the host account. And the host account is simply tied to a revenue meter, that's right at the, the solar farm. So it is actually the solar farm's revenue meter. And then, once those aggregate in the host accounts, they would then get distributed to these beneficial accounts, depending on which electric accounts the town selects. And it would be allocated on a pro rata basis, depending on, you know, how the town decides. So these monetary credits just show up on the electric bill at the current VNM credit rate. And that rate does vary from year to year, and it usually is issued twice a year. So it does fluctuate. Right now, the current rate
Yeah, Pro's up there, Chris. Still there? He has the host command.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
Still there, Chris?
At a predetermined rate from the solar farm. So the savings to the town would be the difference right now of fourteen point. My, it's saying my interconnection or internet connection is unstable. Can everyone still hear me?
Yeah, we, we, you blocked off for about thirty seconds, and that's it.
Oh, really? Okay. Well, let me know if that happens again, and I'll, I'll try to switch my internet. But, so the savings to the town is the difference between the published VNM credit rate, again, fourteen point two cents, and whatever the town enters into with us. And I'll get into what options are available. We usually offer two different types of contract structures. So the moni, the monthly credit obviously is calculated by the, the generation of the solar farm times the net metering rate. It's published on EverSource's website. I've provided a link here, and this, this link actually updates every time they publish a, a new rate. So I'll give you, just as an example, the, the credit rate earlier this year, and it tends to be higher in the first part of the year as opposed to the, the latter half of the year. It was about a penny and a half higher in Q1 and Q2 versus Q3 and Q4. One thing that is very important to understand is that this credit rate is made up of three components. You've got the general service charge, which is basically just the electric energy charge. You've got the federally mandated, I forget what the acronym is for this. This is a, a whole host of really tiny charges that are mandated by FERC, and it's actually a deduction. And then you've got your distribution and transmission credits. The distribution and transmission credits under this VNM program decline in years two and then three through, through twenty. So you, year one, you get eighty percent of the full credit. Year two, you get sixty percent, and then forty percent in years three through twenty. The rates I've shown right here above, those include the eighty percent. So I'll show on the next slide how that impacts the credit rates as you get into the later years. So using those Q1 and Q2 rates as an example, you can see the breakdown of what the various components are that make up the full credit rate. And just to use that areas or that rate as an example, in year two, your rate would drop to fourteen cents. And then in year three, it would drop to twelve point five cents. And then it would flatten out. Now, it's hard to predict what's going to happen with, you know, energy rates in Connecticut over time. One would assume that the general service charge and the DNT charges would increase with inflation, but very hard to predict what's going to happen. We've seen them kind of float around. They've been as low as twelve cents or twelve and a half cents, and they've been as high as like sixteen and a half cents. In terms of contract options that we offer to municipalities, we offer two different structures. One would be the fixed rate, which is generally a twenty-year, year-term contract with a rate of nine to ten cents, depending on the project, fixed for the twenty years. The other option we offer is what we call a floating rate, which is just a flat discount off of what the virtual net metering credit rate is at the time. So it's twenty-two percent discount, no matter what, with no floor, uh, floor rate. So if it dropped to, you know, eight cents, you'd still get twenty-two percent off of the VNM credit. So that, there's a risk reward. I, I can tell you that most towns tend to select the, the fixed rate. They're banking on energy prices going up over time. Even at, you know, one percent, it probably would outweigh the twenty-two percent discount. But again, I, I can't say that with any guarantee that there would be a, a savings to the town without selecting the floating rate option. And that's just sort of a, you know, something that I don't want to misrepresent to the town of Plainfield.
Right.
And I did mention the lowest VNM rate that I've seen, based on the data I have, was back in 2016. And it, it hit twelve point oh seven nine cents. So if you were in your three with your lowest DNT credit, you'd see that your credit rate would be nine point three seven cents. Certainly higher right now, but that, that's just a potential risk with the fixed rate option. So that's the basic structure. I wanted to try to get through this as, you know, quickly as possible and leave it open for questions. And then, you know, if we want to talk about the, the pilot, Kevin, we certainly can do that, too.
Thank you. I, I do have a couple of questions, and some of these are easy, some a little more involved. But you were talking about the VNM program also has municipal customers and ag customers.
Yep.
What ag customers do you have that take advantage of this?
We don't have any agricultural customers right now. There is a carve-out, I should have probably prefaced, prefaced that. There is a carve-out in the program for state entities, municipal, and for the agricultural sector. So there are farms that, that do participate. And generally, what they do is they don't have enough usage or, or, you know, on their electric accounts. So they'll sell those credits to municipalities. They generally don't use them all theirself, themselves.
Yeah, I, I would say like larger farms who are using hydroponics or internals that might be able to utilize some of it is a larger farm.
Right, right, that's a possibility.
The other, next, next one below it is, uh, solar, is solar is classified, what is hydro also?
Is, uh, it's a good question. I'm pretty sure it is.
Okay. And I know the state legislator is still talking about if they're going to go back at all. So that, that's going to be questionable at this point.
Right.
So we're getting to that, the chart that you showed, and basically the, the, it says Plainfield pays the project for the VNM. But really, it's, it's credits that we're talking about for payment, because we're buying into the credits.
Yeah, yeah, the town receives the monetary credits and then pays the solar farm, whatever the rate is agreed to.
Got it. And we, and we see that in our billing. I do have one kind of an important one, obviously, the DNT. For what we've seen over the last couple of weeks and that, in the way that the distribution has gone through a lot of people's bills, I don't think there's a lot of happy people whatsoever because of the distribution rate. So that could be a kind of a bigger impact to, to this unless it's, it's not a fixed rate at this point, right?
Yeah, are you, are you saying if, if the distribution and transmission charges go up?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, again, I can't predict with any certainty what's going to happen with rates over time. But I can tell you when our bank finances these projects, they are forecasting some pretty big increases over time.
Right.
To, to both the general service charge and DNT.
Yeah, as we, as we just recently seen.
Right, so the pass-through to, to the damage, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only other thing here that I see is, you know, when you, when you read the presentation, there's, there's always those words that stick out. And one of the words that sticks out to me is when we're talking about a fixed rate, obviously, it's a higher risk. And the word negative, it could even be negative. So that's, that's, that's definitely a risk, and it's going to get to that point.
And I, I, I can't in good conscience give this presentation without telling you that, that, that is an inevitable risk. I can't, I can't sell you something that, you know, without being fully transparent on everything.
That's appreciated, though. I do, you gotta be upfront about it, so I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is something I think we can talk over. And we will continue the conversation if that's all right with you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I certainly didn't think, you know, expect the town to, to make a decision on this meeting. But I, I did want to stress the importance of potentially making a decision relatively quickly, given, given the, you know, the queue is filling up pretty quick, and there, there is no risk to the town.
That, that's an important piece of it, too, because if we can get ourselves at least in, in line while we're talking further about it, we know where we are, and there's no, no cost for pullback if we wanted to, so.
Yep. And I can certainly, you know, help put together a spreadsheet that you can kind of play with some of the numbers to see what the savings would be. I mean, I, I have, I can't represent to you what the savings would be over time. But I think the best thing to do would be to contact some of the references that I could give you from the other towns. And they can tell you what they've seen in terms of savings, at least over the first, you know, two years on some of the.
Definitely be helpful, and I appreciate that, so, yes. Okay. All right, thank you for that presentation. If you would, could you back from?
Kevin?
Yes. I'm sorry, I apologize. Art?
Yes, thank you. You mentioned that at the beginning, phase one and two, they already have, you already have virtual net, net metering with other towns with that?
We, we do, yes, for those two.
Okay. The other, the only other question I have, I don't know much about solar panels. You're saying they'll produce whatever, one megawatt per field. Is that constant through the twenty years because these panels degrade? Do you change them if necessary to maintain that one megawatt coming out of harm?
Great question, yeah. They do degrade generally at a rate of about a half a percent per year. So our forecast of energy delivery would factor that in. And then if they're, if they degrade beyond that, there's a warranty, and we would, we would replace those that degrade faster.
That's all the questions I have.
All right, thank you, Chris. If you wouldn't mind moving me back to host, and I can continue on with other presentations I have?
Yes. See if I can figure out how to do that.
On the right-hand side, will you see the participant list?
Yep.
Okay, if you hover over mine name, you'll see there's a more button there.
Yep.
Under the more button, it says make host, or something to that effect. And there we go, all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Chris, you and I will probably try to, I'll try to hook up with you either towards the end of the week or first thing next week, and we can start, you know, continuing our conversations.
That sounds good.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for everyone's time. Appreciate it. Take care.
Thank you. All right, we can continue on. We have item number four, which is discussion and act on a proposed open space policy. I know Mary Ann is on right now. So on item number four, you have been presented a opportunity to read through the updated open space draft. I think this pretty much covers a lot of the issues of what happens when something's listed as open space. This gives a much more definition as to what can and cannot be done. I do know that there are, have been two parcels that are open space right now that people were asking, hey, can we buy that? Well, there's certain restrictions on there and certain things you want to keep so that it is open space and has a certain definition and meaning to it. So I don't know if you read through the whole thing, Art, and given some thought to it. But if we do have any questions, Mary Ann is on today.
I do.
Okay.
Mary Ann, number, number two, it's just a little confusing to me. It seems like it should be worded like number nine. You reading that?
Motorized, non-motorized?
Right, non-motorized vessels. But then the second sentence, non, non-motorized vehicles are allowed in any waters. It just confuses me. This should be a vessel, vehicle. Read number nine. Number nine seems to be the same, but for vehicles. Number two seems to be for vessels. Should that be non-motorized vessels instead of vehicles?
Actually, number two, it's, it's saying the same thing.
But should it be, should it be for vessels? On the second sentence, they have non-motorized vessels are allowed in any waters of the town open space unless required.
Not necess, not necess. Well, let's say, okay, now, if you have, God help me, I'm going to the A team here. You've got a Jeep, and that Jeep can also go on water.
Okay.
That's a, that, that's a vehicle.
Okay.
And a boat is a vessel, so that's.
So then explain to me a non-motorized vehicle.
A paddleboat. You know, the pedal boat. A canoe.
But that's a vessel, not, that's a vehicle, not a vessel?
Right.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
In both those sentences, you could add in, so the first sentence is non-motorized vessels or vehicles, and the second sentence, the same thing. That way, you've got both covered.
Gotcha. I can do that. Is that acceptable to you, Art?
Yeah, I think it would make more sense to me.
Okay.
Makes consistency.
Non-motorized vessels.
That way, it doesn't matter what they bring in. If they bring in something with a motor, then it's not allowed.
Exactly.
It covers both bases.
Okay, yeah, okay, I think I can. So, so what you're saying with question two is you could go on open space water with the paddleboat, but you couldn't go on with a Jeep?
Correct.
No motorized vehicles.
Or even a motorboat, a speedboat, you can't.
Right, right.
Or a skidoo.
There's also, there's also those amphibious six-wheelers that also can go into the water. And so we want to be able to eliminate all of that.
Exactly.
Maybe if, if we can just clear it up so everybody could understand what they are, you know, maybe in parentheses, what kind of vehicle? A couple of examples or something, I don't know. So it's a little clearer, maybe. I, I don't know. That's up to you. Okay, so anyway, number seven, horseback riding is permitted on trails?
Yeah.
Is it limited, it's just to trails, just like dirt bikes, right, mountain bikes? Because it says mountain bikes. They can't be used off trail.
Right.
Didn't say that for the horses, so I wasn't sure. And that, and then number eight, I'm just, I gotta ask, does this include horses? Is there a way they pick up the messes? You have to clean up after your pets, number eight.
Yeah, I, I get that. And, you know, I thought about that, but.
I, I do know they make bags for them to wear. I don't know, it could be required, or I don't know. I didn't see somebody, you know, walking down the trail.
This, this is your policy, but I think that that's a lot. You know, to require you to stop and pick up your horse's defecation. I mean, a dog, easy enough. But if you're running and you're, if your horse is going, and then all of a sudden, he does what he does, that's, and I just think that that's an awful lot to ask of someone.
It's also a, a horse manure is, is much easier to buy gradable than in, in dog feces. So you're walking on a leash, having your dog on a leash, and you can pick it up. That's how dog parks work. Horses are. It breaks down much quicker.
I'm just trying to think it through. Somebody steps in it and complains. So that was my only questions on it.
So do we want to make a minor revision and bring it back to the next meeting? That way you can see it?
For number two?
Yeah. I'm sorry, no, no, um, yeah, would you like to make that mod, modification now? We can make that modification with examples.
Actually, I just, I flipped to the second page, and Kathy's name's on this, too. So actually, she should.
Yep.
Be able to speak on this, if you would like to.
All right, so let's do this, let's, if you don't mind, I would ask to make a motion to table to the next meeting to make that a whole business.
I will motion table.
Motion table's been made by Art. I will second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And number five says, consider and act on a bid for the town real estate agent of I Park remaining lots. As you can see in the booklet you have in front of you, we had an RFP some time ago, it's actually six months to the day, that we were talking about RFPs for a real estate broker to help us to. RFPs for a real estate broker to help us to move along the remaining I park lots. We, at the time, had initially granted Spalding the opportunity to be the real estate broker agent of service. And six months has come and six months is gone. And I gotta be honest, I haven't really heard anything. So because we had an RFP that came back with multiple people who are interested, we have an opportunity to utilize that list to go to the next after six months, or we can also continue the negotiation with the current broker. So I wanted your opinion on it, but I'm going to tell you mine right off the bat. I think that we have exhausted six months and we haven't heard anything. I have no problem with moving on to another appropriation.
Now, we can just do that. You don't have to go back out to Art.
Nope. It gave us a list and those, and if you take a look at the minutes, explains what we did. So we have chosen the first entity. We have the opportunity and the right to actually move on to the next one. And that is our right, so. And by the way, it would be under the same guides, guidelines of the contract that was signed already. So I don't think there's a problem with that.
Just want a motion?
Just please.
I'll make a motion that we pick Lime and Real Estate to represent us on those four I park lots for the next six months.
Today is August 10th, so six months from today.
February 10th or?
As long as it's six months from today.
February, yeah, six months.
Becky, you're all set with that motion?
Yeah.
Okay, motion's been made. I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We now go to other, and I want to ask the people that are on right now, just to bear with me because I don't want to bore you with other, but we do have some others. For those who are on and for the people who will be listening to this later on, there's been a lot of things going on in the last few weeks, never mind a few months. We've gone through with a pandemic. We've gone through with obviously through the tropical storm that came through. At this very moment, if I was to take a quick look and see on our outage map, we are, wow, it's still moving down. We're down to 39 homes. 39 homes that are still without power, and so we're getting them. One of the problems that I see is we're having a major problem, though, with our, one of our WPCA plants. We had one earlier this week where as soon as it knocked out power for all the plants, we informed Eversource through our chain of command link that we had a problem. And we advised them of what the issues could happen. And sure enough, even though we had continued to reach out to that liaison, it happened. And so we had a spill, an overflow spill of 150,000 gallons of partially treated, but not disinfectant wastewater that bypassed the Plainfield Village treatment facility and went into the Quinabog. So there was a notation from DEP stating that for the next 48 hours, they advise that not to utilize any of the waterways that connected to it. As we stand today, we may have 38 residents who still don't have power. But we also have one wastewater treatment plant that's still running on generator. But it's, it's having a problem. I would say that we've had these generators for a long, long time. I think 75 was when they were first put in, some of them. And so what we're doing is we are still contacting Eversource to say we're still having a problem. It's a broken power support line that is snapped at the top, and there's three transformers on it and wires hanging. So we have a generator running. We have put a plan in place for the town of Plainfield to bring in alternate backup generator there just in case. We have also contacted Eversource. They may be able to have a third one there in place just in case, because we want to make sure we're we're still running. We don't have any problems again. So I put a note out there to the public telling of my dissatisfaction with Eversource's process they did this time with trying to help and support our municipalities. I'm still dissatisfied. I think they can do much better. I think they know that, too. But we are working on it. I wanted the residents to know that we had some other things in plan in place. If they needed to take a shower, they could come to the town hall to utilize the showers here. We also have non potable water here. We have asked and gotten a great response from the fire departments. They have access to non potable water if they need it, any of the fire departments. We were, we have utilized that cooling center, which is the recreation center. So it's a cooling center and recharging for your devices. We had already worked out something. So over the next three days, in case people were still out, they could go up to the highway department and just fill out a quick form, and they would be able to get access to bottled water and also MREs in case they still were out of power and needed something to eat. So we're trying to do best we can with helping anybody. We'll still maintain that process and keep moving forward. But I wanted people to know where we stood with that. There are a lot of, a lot of things that you can see that town of Plainfield has been doing. I know yesterday was a a very warm day, but we had a fantastic ride through all the villages with the Post 91's VJ VJ Day event. So that was well received by the public and there's video up here on that as well. We have, a week before, we had the Celebrate Plainfield 2020 Caravan of Cheers. And that was a success. We went through the villages with different opportunities for people to see the parade. We still have music in the park every Wednesday. We have some other things going on. I want people to know that we have, the town of Plainfield is doing a hosting of food and monetary donation drive to help Project Penn. Normally during the VJ parade, they would have an opportunity to go and pick up food or money for Project Penn along the parade. Well, the way it was done this year, there's no way. So we decided to try to work as a town hall in support with all of the fire departments, police, EM services, and the Plainfield Business Association to see if we can work together to try to help them out. Any little bit is much appreciated. So I want people to consider that. At the same time, we were working with the All Hallows, St. Augustine, St. John's, and Plainfield Town Hall is working together to try to bring forth school supplies. It's the Second Annual Backpack and School Supply Collection. If you have a question on that, please call the town hall. We're going to be working with that also for the August 15th food drive, and they will have someone here to help and represent and be able to do the collection as well. So trying to work together with everybody here. The other things that are happening, I think, are a little more town related. I think what we're trying to do is, we were a heart safe designated town in the past. We're trying to get back to that. So we're working with the Department of Public Health on how to get the training we need to get back to that designation. I think it's a great designation. So we're trying to do that. I started work with Revised. Revised Company is the company that's been helping us with our new website. We have a few volunteers who said they'd like to help us with that, and I appreciate the fact that I volunteered to do that. So over the next couple of weeks, we're working on our first phase of that, and we'll share that with a few people to see how they like it. So we go from there. You'll notice something else was put up on the website today talking about this is the Office of Health Strategy for the state of Connecticut. There's a public hearing, and just to give more detail and what's behind the scenes on that, this is where the Baptist Horus Hospital, AACC Plainfield, was looking to put an ambulatory service center at Plainfield behind the emergency room. There's another building there. And this is for daytime operations where they're a freestanding, it's not hospital, but it is actually working with different types of things you would have if you're looking for support. This is definitely worth it because it's not having to drive 30 minutes or 35 minutes north and the same thing going south. This will be centered here in town of Plainfield. We even have day surgeries. So it's a fantastic opportunity for the community. And I think it'd be fantastic. So I will be speaking in support of this measure on the 12th at 10 a.m. So that's what that was about. By the way, the state of Connecticut sent us that this morning. So I know it says on there, there's a, it's something due by August 7th, which is a written petition. Just to see, just a status petition, just saying, where are we? Are we still going forward? That's all that was. But the state of Connecticut gave that to me today and asked me to put that up on the website, and I did. We're working on a neglected cemetery grant. There's a lot of old cemeteries in town. A grant opportunity came forward. We're working on that. And I think the one I think that we've been waiting for for a long, long time. So just today, I received the final signature, but they already approved it last week. This is the reintroduction of the bus services for the town of Plainfield. We were able to work in agreement with NCOG and the state Connecticut DOT so that I have the final signed signatures. There'll be a press release out hopefully this week early because we anticipate putting this in play on or around September 1st of this year. So that we can actually do what we haven't done in a long, long time. And that is to put bus service in the town of Plainfield that not only connects NCOG and going north, but this plan actually is to connect it to CCOG or Seat and go all the way to the coastline. I think Tom will like this number because we had budgeted for 26,000. It's going to come in at 22. It gives us two dedicated routes. I will be sharing with the public the actual plan itself, transit proposal. We are still paying 17%, so that's still good. And I will share with everybody the the actual routes. So they know both Seat's routes and NCOG's routes. So you know, if you were looking to get somewhere going south, you have that plan. We also plan on doing a presentation where we'll show you what the bus looks like, bring that around to the different spots and to the elderly and show them what it looks like. So they know exactly what type of bus it is. And the functionality, how to get in and get out, because it's not that bad at all. It's just a nice and easy thing. It's a dollar ride. So I think it's something that we can we can all utilize. I think it's something, definitely, it's been five years in the making. So for all of those people who've helped to put this together, thank you very much. I know NCOG and Connecticut Department of Transportation really been working hard. I know those people who are, legislators have been pushing, I've been pushing. Maybe too hard sometimes, but I've been pushing. You know, I call and ask almost every week, what's going on, what's going on? So it didn't, it didn't drop off the table. It's here. And within the next week or so, I hope we can make the final announcement, make a press release and start showing people what they have an opportunity to utilize. So that's up next. And I don't think we have anything else going on. I know there's lots of things we're working on for hiring someone for the Water Pollution Control Authority. We're looking to hire someone tomorrow. We put the applications out. We're hiring somebody there. And I think that's it for right now. So unless there's anything else that I forgot?
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Motion is accepted to adjourn. I second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's now 8:03. Again, thank you all. Have a great evening.